You want this one, is that?
Well, no, because I'm not getting.
Okay. I don't know how it ended up over there.
I might need a lift assist to get up.
I'll text, girl.
That's okay, mine is up so high that my feet are dangling.
Mine's real low.
Oh, you didn't, oh.
Oh, I know. Took all the turns we might.
All right, how much was it, twenty?
Twenty, yeah.
Let's start, she's taking out anyhow.
Okay. We will call the meeting to order and let's begin with the Pledge of Legions, please. May Dan stand up, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republiq for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll let everybody get settled in their chairs and with their power cords and we'll get down to business. All right, so, um, beginning with the agenda, does anybody have anything to add?
Go into it or agenda?
Nope.
Michael, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
All right, did someone like to move to approve?
I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Jenny, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kelly, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side, motion carried. Um, the consent agenda, we had minutes from February and the sewer adjustments.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Need to approve by Ed or a second?
A second.
Second by Dawn, any discussion? Any discussion?
Just that Kelly should abstain.
That what?
You should abstain from voting.
Yeah, I planned on that.
Okay, got it.
Two hundred forty gallons an hour went fast.
Ooh, boy, oh boy. All right, uh, last, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side, motion carried, yes, Kelly abstained, okay. Uh, moving on to new business, four point one, the police policy.
So the police department with city council's approval did purchase the Taser Tens, they're the new Tasers. They're almost in, we did get VR training on them recently. Um, this is just a public document that gives the police department guidance on when to use less lethal options and some policy updates concerning the Taser Tens.
All right, does anybody have any questions about that?
How many Tasers did, uh, we get?
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
You're happy with them?
Uh, well.
Oh, you, when you.
We're bringing on them coming up this month where Aaron, myself, and Reed will be instructors.
Okay.
And then we'll be able to train other departments that got the Taser Tens too.
I saw a move to accept.
Okay.
A second.
Motion by Kelly, second by Dawn, any discussion? Any discussion? Any last discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side, all right. We have the Taser policy. Moving on to four point two, update on the park.
Yeah, so, there is gonna be a lot of activity in the park, so I just wanted to kind of overview it for city council. Obviously, the, one of the updates is when you first come into the park, the Veterans Memorial, um, will start getting its panels put up May-June, um, it really depends on when the panels get done. Uh, the panels will be three different panels, they'll be six feet tall, and they're going between the flags and the tank. So if you can picture that kind of paved brick area, right now, it's, um, a little bit uneven, we're gonna fix some of that and then put the, the panels up right by the tank. Two years ago, the tank was repainted, resurfaced. You're also gonna see some loose barricades put up so that, um, kids don't climb on the tank. As a reminder, it's a memorial, it's actually not a toy. We have many other places in the park for that, um, but when they actually did all the restoration on the tank and repainted it, it was actually the honor guard that asked people not to climb back on it. It took them a long time to get all the P-Rock out and to get all the nicks and crannies so that they could paint it. A lot of that was actually, um, donated and then the honor guard paid for the rest. The other, um, thing that you're gonna see a little bit of change on is the, the actual splash pad installation, so we hopefully will break ground in May. Uh, it only takes about eight weeks to, um, do the entire project. In your council packet on page twenty-one, you'll see kind of a preview, those are, that's actually our splash pads. Clearly, the kids are not real, um, but almost the same, um, amount of color, uh, in our splash pad as, as theirs. You know, there, there are some dump buckets and some less water options for kids that are maybe younger and don't wanna have buckets of water dumped on them. The splash pad itself, um, takes up about twenty-three hundred square feet. It's a pretty big area, so that is gonna go just south of where the north restrooms are right now. The trail that, um, is there right now is only three and a half feet wide in places. That is gonna get significantly bigger, so ADA accommodations is eight feet, uh, it'll be concrete from parking lot to parking lot, and that will also adorn some benches and lighting. The other infrastructure things that we're adding to the park is really about the future of what the park's going to be. So the pipe, um, and this can be found on page, it's right after all of it, um, page twenty-eight is a good page to go on. If you wanted a color portion of that, um, it's page thirty. So on page thirty, you'll see a blue line that goes from north to south, that's the water line. The water line, uh, really only needed to be about an inch and a half. But the preference of Public Works and, um, ourselves is that we're actually gonna make that a six-inch water main. And the reason for that is because when we get the new bathrooms in, we are gonna want a lot more water going to it. So if you're at Farm City Fun Fest, you'll know this to be true, you know, using the restrooms and all of a sudden, there's no water pressure. It's because there's shit, that, that line is just not, uh, large enough. So they're gonna kind of supersize that line for us that goes from the, the tower all the way to, um, a fire hydrant because it actually won't go in the bathrooms at this point until we remodel them. And then the other significant improvement that we're making, uh, and honestly, this is just about getting the water out of the park. We all know that the park can hold quite a bit of water, um, it retains water for a long time. That's because there's a lot of clay underneath that soil and it just doesn't drain very well. So the green lines that are on page thirty, um, that really is, uh, all of the storm sewer that they're actually going to put in. There's going to be five different inlets and those inlets, uh, really, um, help get that water out of there. So that is gonna connect to our, our normal storm sewer system that's connected to Main Street. And that'll help get that water out of there. And why is that important? Well, because when, and if we ever get new playground equipment, you know, we don't want that place to flood or be underwater, uh, for any reason. Right now, uh, on that east side of the park, it's usually standing water almost every single year. So that, um, that will hopefully make some significant changes to that. The other thing that I wanna note is that there is a very large oak tree, um, kind of just west of where the splash pad is gonna go. The blue line that goes straight is actually gonna do a small loop-de-loop there, it's gonna do a small kink because we were trying to save that oak tree. Uh, if we went under it with a six-inch line, we would probably smoke all of its roots. So we are trying to be as purposely, purposeful as possible to make sure that we don't cut down, uh, really valuable trees and shade spots. There are two maple trees that are on the pathway, uh, currently that will not make it and we can't move them because they're too big. So, um, the other thing, um, about the park is, uh, you know, Farm City Fun Fest is looking forward to, um, doing things a little bit differently this year and, uh, some of that has to do with the way the splash pad is positioned, to incorporate it so that the kids can have some place to play. But also, we're trying to reduce costs, so the committee, um, heard city council, they, you know, they understood the budget cuts had to come. And so they're renting significantly less tents this year, in fact, there'll only be one tent in the park this year. They're gonna use some other pre-existing shelters for some of the beer garden options. And the main tent is actually not gonna go in the concrete this year, it's gonna go in the grass. Major reason they're making that change is because they're trying to not put more damage to that parking lot. If you haven't been there, it's basically gravel anyway, um, and I don't know if it's the best option. So, uh, you'll see some significant improvements to the park this year, uh, including, like I said, new lighting, a new pathway. Uh, we are doing another DNR grant, uh, for the rest of the pass that will be on the west side of the trail, um, so, you know, on that redwood, uh, street side, we want that path to go all the way around the park to make one large loop. And so, we're working on getting that help, getting that paid for through the DNR grant.
Are we planning on all of the walking paths being concrete or are some gonna be?
Eventually, we would like them to be concrete, but we also wanna do some aggregates, some things that are wood-chipped, something that are less. The one thing that, uh, it has in our comprehensive twenty-eight-year plan is, you know, for less mowing, how can we put gardens or areas that we don't have to mow as much? I mean, twenty acres is a lot to mow, it takes a very long time. Pick up the sticks and do all the things, right? So, eventually, we wanna start putting in some pollinator gardens, some stuff that we don't have to, and the DNR will actually help pay for that. They give seeds out, so. And then the Splash Pad Group just wanted to let you know that they do have some fundraisers, uh, planned. If you haven't seen, the Egg My Yard is back this year, they're egging, I think, given.
Lafayette, Taylor, Winthrop, obviously.
Yeah, so they're, they're expanding their egg presence, uh, and they help, they have a meat raffle, or meat bingo, excuse me, as well coming up, so they do have some additional fundraisers coming.
Okay, um, does anybody have any questions about the park improvements?
Yeah, so all this, was this, this is already in the budget and it's already been approved?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, this, um, when, November, December, something like that, yeah. Yes.
I think it came in two waves, they approved the infrastructure improvements and then the splash pad the next month.
Yes.
And this is the, we talked about the funding that we're, in essence, borrowing it from our reserves and then paying it back, so it was not, it's not part of the tax levy.
It's not, no, other than the payback from the CapEx account.
And then, um, just the liability with the splash, with the splash pad, that's included under the city's whole, um, like a row liability policy?
Yep.
Okay.
Did that, was there an increase because of this or not?
No.
No, I. It'd be so much.
Park liability is the same, so we have a park exemption in Minnesota, if you kill yourself in a park, basically, we're not responsible. You can hurt yourself pretty bad in a park and you, you just, we're not responsible in Minnesota. So, I mean, there's very few exceptions to that rule. In fact, the gentleman that, um, unfortunately passed away at the Beniova State Park is coming under the park exemption and that's what they're, they're arguing right now in court. So, I mean, things do happen in parks.
And we did discuss it with our insurance provider, it wasn't a problem to have the splash pad.
It was actually no increase, they were really happy that we were, you know, just to give you an idea, Martha, the equipment that's there actually poses more liability risk than, um, the splash pad going in because it's very old. There's no guardrails on our slide, the spiral wheel of death, I don't know what you call that thing. There's, there's no buckles on it. When our liability insurance came for another reason and looked at our park, she literally said, "I'm just gonna walk away." So, some of those elements are actually getting taken out because they propose more risk than our splash pad will.
All right, anything else? Questions about park? Thanks to the Splash Pad Group for continuing to fundraise. We do appreciate it.
How many, how many, uh, yards do you have so far?
Gosh, we just opened it too and I think we're at twenty.
I think Brianna opened it on Saturday night and she had twenty-one yards, no, twenty-one dozen, um, eggs sold by Sunday, so.
That's great.
Does somebody have to dress up as the Easter body?
We were, you know.
Yours come with the dead out, Michael.
That's what I heard.
Hmm, somebody might have to have a camera. One more question, about the panels that are going up, but are those with the names on it?
Yes, yep, yeah, the, they'll have the five branches of service on the top and then the names.
What are they made out of?
Granite.
It is granite.
Mm-hmm.
They have quite the base under there then.
They do, they're gonna have to dig. And then, while they're digging, they're gonna correct some of those pavers. I don't know if you've been down there, just, they, over the time, they just kind of settle, yeah.
Michael, I have one more question about the, uh, benches and stuff that people can donate if they want.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I, I, maybe I missed something, but we're.
We are gonna wait until the splash pad gets put in.
Okay.
And then we thought the next season, we would do additional fundraisers for the benches.
Okay. And people could donate money or donate a bench or?
Yeah, they absolutely could. Um, we, we really want updated costs on the benches. And since the order got put in kind of last fall, we didn't wanna go in willy-nilly and say, "Oh, wait, by the way, we need one more." "Oh, we need one more." So we're gonna do like one fundraiser at the end of next year, so that in the next summer, they can get installed. But there will be benches there, there are benches original designed.
Okay.
At the park.
Thank you.
But like shade structures and stuff, you know, aren't within that bid price, we didn't really pay a lot for the shade structures. So if that's something that the community wants to add later on, we definitely can look into it.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say that the Splash Pad Committee, um, made it so that you're gonna see, I guess the best way to see is like a ground bubble, those are areas where we can actually put additional water features. So, you'll notice areas where there are, um.
It's like a water spell.
Yeah, that's a good.
Then they can be added on to, and we can trade features out if all of a sudden they don't work, like you thought?
Yeah, if we, you know, we, if we wanna swap stuff out, we, we definitely can or add to it.
Good. We're gonna have some cameras on this stuff?
Yeah, we are actually getting quotes for cameras right now. Uh, we do have cameras in the park. They're just not as adequate that we need for investigations, we need a little bit more, a longer V-roll. Right now, like when we're catching vandalism in the park, it only gives us a very short snippet of what's going on and we really need a longer duration, so we, we are looking in for a camera option, um, in the park. And then we go right on the light poles, they would be power over ethernet, POE. We're hoping that we can get some quotes for you to see how much they are.
Those have been there a while, because I think those that were newly put in, like when I was first on the council ten years ago.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's been a while.
And lighting, will that be, that area be lit during?
Yeah, the only, um, so the lighting that we chose is, uh, we didn't want, uh, so the shorter the light, the more lights you need to have.
Yeah.
So we actually used the same lights that we are in the park already, like in the parking lot that we replaced two years ago. We're just gonna continue them down the path because then we only needed three instead of putting like ten of the little. You know what I mean, the little pillar ones, the half, they were really expensive and you needed so many of them. And so, we chose to go with the taller ones, then we can hook the cameras up to them directly, it's just a lot more efficient.
Probably less likely to get vandalized too.
Yeah.
And is there a set time then that the, the water's gonna be going, like who turns the water on and off?
There's actually a button that they push.
Is there a ti, oh, so anybody at any time?
Well, it stops at, I think, nine PM.
So there's a timer on it?
Oh, yeah, there's a master timer, but, so there's two timers, there's a timer when it starts during the day and when, at night, when it stops. We can set that whatever we want and we find appropriate. But then there's also a timer that shuts it off when there's no one there. I think most of you have seen it, at splash pads, there's a little button and you push the button and the water starts again, and then, I don't know, five minutes later, it stops again.
It's ten, fifteen minutes, and then a kid has to run to the other place and turn it on and.
And you're the cool kid if you get to the button first, just letting it out. But yeah, there's a button that they push to make it go on and off, but then there's also a master that turns the water on and off.
Automatically, nobody has to be there to turn it on in the morning or turn it off at night, it's just.
It just does it. And then, uh, Troy is going to get his pool license, um.
CPO?
C, CPO.
That's for the?
That's to, or, yeah, because it's a recycling, recirculating one, there will be, he has to get a permit for it.
All right, good, good stuff about the park, anything else, any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to four point three, the admin policy on accounts receivable.
So, since we, uh, have really started, uh, um, accounts receivable, we decided as a staff, um, that we really needed to nail down when we go into delinquency and when we send things to collections. There is not currently a policy with the city of Winthrop where we are very concrete about when we send collections, so if you look at item four on that, it says delinquency and collection process, those three steps are really what this policy is all about. It's, hey, our initial notice to you is a net thirty terms, you have to pay your bill. So what do we send accounts receivable out for? Well, everything, um, you know, city bills, if they get a fire call and we have to send a bill, um, we, we use the AR system a lot now. And, uh, we keep track of payments that come into the system, it marks unpaid, it knows exactly how, um, to handle that stuff. But what we really didn't have is a concrete way to say, city council has authorized us, after ninety days, sixty days, to go off and send you to collections. And so we really needed that okay from city council and that's what this policy, um, really goes after. The other thing, um, that it allows us to do is make payment arrangements. And so, you're giving myself and, and Heather discretion on taking payment arrangements. So, person can't pay their full fire bill, maybe they're strapped for cash initially, you know, that's fine, they just need to let us know so that we can make actual payment arrangements to the bill that's outstanding. So I think that's, that's the policy in a nutshell, I think it's a pretty, uh, easy, comprehensive policy about when we send, um, bills to collections and when we make payment arrangements and what authority you're giving us to do so.
And the payment plan, um, do you kind of have, is it based on what somebody can pay? So like if somebody's really kind of destitute, they can pay like fifty dollars a month or twenty-five or whatever they're able to pay.
But you're not talking about utility?
Utilities is a whole different.
Okay.
Thing, yeah.
So is there gonna be a certain timeframe that they have to pay it in?
You know, I think it's gonna depend on, on what they can afford.
Okay.
And what their situation is.
I think it's important to have this because it's consistent, you know, then you don't run into something that got put off and they didn't get the, you know, delinquent notice and the, it didn't go to collection for months and months and somebody else did go quicker. I think it's good to have a very set policy.
Yeah.
Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve this policy.
Motion by Ed, second by Martha, any discussion? Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side, motion carried. Four point four, city council code of conduct. And I would just like to say thank you to Michael for doing some legwork on this.
Yeah, it's not perfect yet, we found some spelling errors today at the staff meeting, so it's good. You know, I don't really, other than giving us some direction on which way to go, we really wanted to make a, um, a code of conduct, but more like an orientation packet, you know. I've gone through a couple council changes now and a few mayors and every single time I, I said, man, I wish there wasn't something that was a hundred and fifty-page legal document that said, here, just read this, because it's really, those documents aren't easy to read. So this gives you really a nine-page document, um, that, number one, uses League of Minnesota Cities language, and goes through very basic, I would say, things that city council members should be aware of. You know, that introductory pledge that says, you know, and we're not gonna go line by line here, but, um, you know, that says, hey, I'm gonna comply with the state laws and I'm gonna comply with state statute and I'm gonna be consistent with policy and respecting the process. But also, you know, down to like, when can we accept gifts and donations, which, you know, who even, who even thinks about mentioning that to a councilor their first month? So, I, I think that the document, um, as it sits right now, is really consistent with League of Minnesota Cities practices. The city of Blaine is where this kind of originated from, they shared it with league members, I don't know, a couple months ago. We changed some stuff because their city code's a little bit different than ours. But I do think that it's a good starting point and I, um, even the roles of council staff and commissioners, um, is, I think, great for someone that comes onto council and doesn't understand what their exact role is, you know, there's a flow chart, there's some, um, some tables and graphs to really, um, spell it out. I think that there was some language that the mayor brought up about the, um, the commission, uh, work, which I think we could definitely change, you know, that, that whole point about working with commissions is about, you know, you're not gonna go in there and control the commissioner, you're gonna trust planning and zoning to make those decisions and present proposals. What they're trying to do is say, hey, we're gonna delineate you from the decision-making tree until it gets to be your turn. And I think that's, that, that's really important. So I think tonight, I think what we really wanna know is, is this document sufficient? Did you see gaps? Um, what would you like to see different about it? You know, that's, uh, five main section is really that introductory pledge, complying and enforcement, comply with the law, rules for council staff and commissions, and then working with the community. Uh, is there anything that you guys see in there that you didn't like?
I thought the, just overall, I was at the League of Minnesota Cities, um, advanced elected officials training this weekend and, um, they taught, referenced several times how important it is to have good onboarding information for new council. It's important to have this kind of, um, code of conduct and to remind everybody about it frequently. And, um, that they did, we spent about a part of an hour talking about what is the city council's responsibility, what staff responsibility, what falls elsewhere to committees and commissions, so, um, I think that is really critically important.
Good, so we'll get some of the spelling errors out and some of the wrong spacing and, uh, we'll have it for next council meeting. I just wanted you guys to get that first glance and if you have stuff that you see, don't be afraid to put in an email, send it to us and, and we'll get it fixed.
Has the city attorney looked at this yet?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And?
I haven't gotten any feedback yet. But I will tell you that the lawyers at the League of Minnesota Cities, Blaine City Attorneys and Jared, our other attorney for our, um, code have, have looked at it before.
Under the open meeting law, I, I understand that, um, I didn't see anything in here about closed meetings.
We can definitely add that.
It's just good for everyone to know why you would close a meeting.
Yeah, that's great, the seven, five reasons that you can close a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely add that.
Good idea, especially for using it kind of as an onboarding thing for new council members, it's nice to have that.
That's a good idea.
And it's refreshing for a lot of us. Okay, so the council code of conduct was more of an informational item today, but does anybody have anything that they want to bring up specifically that needs attention in the brushing up?
I think it looked all right.
Okay. If not, we will move on to four point five, the Paid Family Medical Leave. If not, we will move on to four point five, the paid family medical leave.
This is my favorite discussion.
It's gonna cost us money, isn't it?
Okay. So, the state of Minnesota is instituting paid FMLA leave. We unfortunately, as a city, do not get out of this. And it applies to you, it applies to ambulance, it applies to fire, and it's gonna get expensive. So we actually are even thinking about paying city councilors differently. We pay you quarterly versus at the end of the year. Because for reporting purposes, it makes it extremely difficult to only report you guys once. Why I'm putting this on there is to make sure that you understand that although it will have a financial impact on the budget, we're talking about less than one percent. The employees and the employer get to, get to, get to help pay into this. So like, myself and Logan and Heather will all get this deducted from our taxes as well. I will tell you that there's supposed to be a magical formula coming out that is supposed to give us how much it's supposed to cost. I included that in your agenda packet, it's on page forty-six. Do I think it's gonna be right? Hmm, no. But we'll see, but it will cost us, we think it'll cost the city about five to seven thousand dollars every single year. And so what this does is it pays the employee up to twelve weeks initially of their wage. Normally it's up to ninety percent, but it depends on what type of wage you are, and it's, there's a formula for that as well. But this point eight eight percent that they're charging small businesses, charging cities, charging, I mean, this comes out of a volunteer firefighter's paycheck, isn't that ridiculous? Anyway, we would be able to pay for them to be at home while they're sick. Now there's an additional eight weeks that can be intermittent. So they could have up to, and including twenty weeks of leave of absence from a job, from the city, from the volunteer fire service, where we aren't really able to do anything about it. This gets directly, so this is under deed, just like unemployment is, this is under deed, and it is going to be administered by deed, just like unemployment. So it'll be another tax on your paycheck, woo. And I don't think, this is just my opinion, this is not policy, I don't think that you're gonna... You've, you're seeing a lot of pushback now from the Minnesota Chamber, and the regular Chamber of Commerce individuals are really starting to push back. They were going to try to delay this about a week ago, and it got turned down. Indeed got the permission to start this in twenty twenty-six. So the clock starts ticking because we, as a city, have to have a policy put in place by December, and we have to go over it with every single employee, including all volunteer ambulance, all volunteer fire, and all city council members. So anyone that gets a paycheck from Winthrop, city of Winthrop, has to be informed of the policy and how it's going to impact their paycheck. And that goes into effect then, January twenty, January first of twenty twenty-six.
So what is the difference between this and what we call PTO, paid time off?
They, this has nothing to do with PTO. Just like a regular federal medical leave act, the first fourteen days or two weeks, you can use E S S T, you can use PTO, you can use comp time, am I missing one?
They don't know if they'll use E S S T.
Oh, that's right, that's a mystery.
You can use PTO and comp.
What is E S S T?
Emergency safe and sick time.
Last.
That was last year.
That was last year.
That's still being decided.
Yeah.
Can a employee say, no, I don't want it?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
I think it's, I mean, it's, it's like an, sort of an insurance policy, like unemployment. We don't have to have the cash sitting in our accounts, we just
Yes.
pay in and let deed administer it.
Yeah. So it's something that we wanted to bring forth because you're gonna see policies and you're gonna see decisions made here pretty quick because really, you know, by the time we, by the time we get this policy into effect, it'll be summer, fall. You know, we're trying to wait for some guidance from the state because we can't really say, okay, this is the policy, but we don't have the formula calculator for any of the employees, and we don't know any, like, if I was an employee, like if I was an employee at, you know, cash-wise, and they said, oh, by the way, we're gonna take my money out of your check and you're covered out of FMLA, the first question I would say was, well, how much would I get paid if I went on FMLA? Right? It would be the first question, but no one knows that formula yet. So they're working on it, that's what they told us. So, we, we hope to have that policy put into place by, you know, summer, fall, before the budget season, so that we know how much it's gonna cost the taxpayers, how much it's gonna cost the employees, and put it into a policy that can, someone can make sense of it.
Okay. Any other questions about that? I'll, I'd say one percent is much better than I expected, I was thinking that was gonna be.
You know, there's been some conversations about them rolling it into unemployment completely. Instead of having two separate programs, it'd be one, and then you would only get twenty weeks of unemployment. But I don't know where that House resolution went, so.
I guess there's gonna be a little discussion and action on that in the next.
Yeah, I will say that it really excludes zero people. I mean, even if you're a small business, if you pay into the unemployment, then you are going to pay this tax as well.
Producers contractors can also opt into it.
Yes.
And this is Minnesota, just Minnesota right now?
Yeah, I think there's, did they say nine?
Thirteenth state.
Thirteenth state, one of the lucky thirteen.
Okay, so moving on to four point six, the update on township fire contracts. Could we ever change the dynamics of this?
Yeah, well, Mayor Troublehorn was at this meeting. I just wanted to give an update and give me, give you my general thoughts. So, right now we have a contract for fire and ambulance with the surrounding towns, obviously. They've had this contract in hand for almost two years. And at the last minute, at the last meeting, they wanted some language changed. And Ken, our lawyer, looked at it and he said, I, I don't, I wouldn't change it. It's not, it's not ambiguous at all, it says after six years, we may have to go out for some equipment. I wanna give you a zoomed out fifty thousand look at this contract, what's really happening with ambulance and fire in general. Because I think it's really important to look at this as a holistic feel of what's happening with emergency services. So, we have the largest population of US citizens retiring and being in their home for longer periods of time. We have an ambulance service which is getting some renewed energy and new roles being thrown at them all the time. We have rural clinics closing, and I'm not saying we are gonna see that, but you never know. Look at Mayo Clinic, look at Alina, they have been closing rural clinics left and right. And we have a service area that is the second largest volunteer service area in the state of Minnesota. And it only wants to grow. Other townships have already contacted us and said, can Winthrop cover our next twelve sections? Hey, can Winthrop cover the next twelve sections of this? Fire is a whole lot of hurt coming our way. So if you have not heard, OSHA since September eleventh, two thousand and one, has been feverishly at work for two decades. Looking at policies that keep firemen safe, well, those policies would all but bankrupt.
Small cities, large cities.
Large cities. I mean, our liability, Troy, myself, and Adam figured out that we would be out of pocket right away. We would have to replace almost half our fleet. It would cost us about five point six million dollars, and we would have to do it immediately. The conversations with the townships since I've been here have been ones of, I guess, mistrust, and they've been really strained. And I say that on record just to be completely blunt and honest. Their contribution to Winthrop has been minimal at best. And I think going forward, our liability financially is gonna just increase. It's only gonna get more expensive. Though we have things in this contract that, and I'm just gonna pick one thing, but this could be put up to multiples, right? There is a tanker, there's an equipment policy within the contract that deals with the townships. We pay fifty percent, and then based on population and use, it goes out to the rest of the, the townships, excluding Given, because Given has their own fire department. So we don't use tankers in town, right? We have fire hydrants, and we have them for a reason, but yet we still pay fifty percent of the tankers. And I think before we sign this contract and we look at this contract, we tell the townships around us, hey, that's great that we got more time to look at the contract, but we're no longer paying for any tankers. Now, they're probably not gonna care immediately because we just replaced a tanker. It costs the citizens almost half a million, it was almost a half a million dollar tanker. But I don't know why the city continues to pay for them. So I was pretty new when that happened, it was in twenty-one into twenty-two. And I just, I mean, just to be completely honest, I don't think the city should be paying for them. And I know that it was a good faith effort on us, but, you know, I'll let you guess how much they, the townships pay into their actual operating budget every year. And it's less than twenty thousand between all of them. And just like last week, we spend a significant amount of time at fire, going to grass fires and out of control burns, and I would say it's fifty fifty on whether it's inside this town or out in the townships. When you look at ambulance, you know, it wanes, it goes from, hey, almost fifty percent of the calls are outside of Winthrop, they're going to, you know, Given or the other townships. And sometimes I just don't think that the payment to our citizens is fair. What we pay in is seven times more. Our tax levy that includes ambulance and fire is seven times more what the townships are paying in. So, is that fair, is it not fair? I don't know, I don't know what fair looks like, but I know that there's other resources that we can use, including a taxing district, that would spread out all of our expenses at one time to everyone equally based on the value of your property. And last year, we presented to the townships the agreement, the township agreement, okay. So the League of Minnesota Cities, they have that for the townships. It's called the Minnesota Township Association, TWA, just like the plane. Those two entities, League of Minnesota Cities and the Township Association, got together and they devised a formula. That formula I presented last year. And it significantly would increase their payment, but they would never have to talk about another annual ambulance purchase, they would never talk about another fire purchase, it would just happen automatically. And why I brought up the OSHA regulations and all the things that are coming down is, pretty soon we're not gonna get a choice. We're gonna have to replace equipment, like our tanker, that, the older tanker, the small tanker that we have, that is all, over twenty years old now. So by federal guidelines, that thing should not be used.
Seven years, right?
It's seven years, and then they gotta go down the road.
And what we've done in the past is when we buy equipment, we always go to the townships and, and fairly, I mean, we give them lots of notice, it's gonna cost this much, we're planning to buy it in, you know, January of year. But it, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of pushback. And I, I get that the townships are trying to be frugal with their dollars and save their taxpayers as much money as they can, but Michael's right, there's, there's been a, just the, just the discussions about when to buy a, a piece of equipment or the discussion about, you know, this or that line in the contract, it does feel combative and, and it's, I think that's really unfortunate, I wish we could work more continually.
And again, on the Winthrop side, you know, we are providing a service, plus all the admin, plus all the, the meetings and extraness, right, that all comes from us, that's our goal.
Plus the people who staff, the volunteers on the ambulance and the fire department are almost exclusively. I mean, there might be a couple of firefighters that live right outside of town, but they're, they're residents of Winthrop. So that cost, that cost of that, which is real, people's time and energy, that comes from their citizens too.
So this per section cost, is that?
I think you're looking at ambulance.
Fire service.
Fire service, so fire and.
I mean, are they set up now so that we are recovering, or is?
We increased this almost threefold since I came because they weren't even covering like four percent of the cost of running a fire department. So each year now, they've seen increases, so. You know, we have incrementally, they're paying a hundred and fifty a section, I think, originally when I got here, or one twenty-five. And last year we increased it to three seventy-five off the bat. And it goes up every year after that. And so ambulance is very similar, we take the sections that we serve, and then each section is sixty-five dollars. Given, the city of Given, is a little bit different because we cover them with our ambulance. We don't charge them per section, we charge them per call. Because we do a lot of calls over in Given.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but our, our per section cost is less than, like if you go further east?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It is still cheaper.
But are these covering our costs?
No.
No?
Especially when you look at the cost of everything going up, you know? I don't know, Heather, was it in two thousand and twenty-two, we got together, no, it was in twenty-three, we got together and, no, it was in twenty-two, when, you know, we broke it to them that, I think everyone thought ambulance was just self-supporting itself and so was fire, like that was so far from the truth. Ambulance supplies, ambulance oxygen, mileage on the cars, gas, all of that got more expensive. That's why staffs recommended this last year to raise, right, how much we were getting paid for calls. Because we are not covering our costs in either service. And, I mean, if you look across the state of Minnesota, that is pretty common right now. I mean, that is not, it's not an anomaly, we're not the only ones. So ambulance, for instance, got sixty-seven thousand, is that even close? Sixty, seventy, sixty-two, it was sixty-some thousand back from the state of Minnesota because they know that this is such a problem. And so for the first time, ambulance probably came out ahead once, you know, that money was deposited. But it is, it's a problem, and when our partners in the field don't even realize that it's not a problem, it was hard to get them to come around to it. I mean, I can give you, for instance, so Princeton, Minnesota has agreements with their townships. You know how much their townships pay them every year? Every township pays them almost sixty thousand dollars a year. Because they no longer contract with and bicker over the equipment or when to buy the next fire truck, or when is it the right time to buy the next ambulance? Which, by the way, we're gonna go find a new ambulance at the end of this year. Those things are no longer a negotiation, they just happen. And those payments that they're using, that was an agreed upon, agreed upon contract between the Township Association and the League of Minnesota Cities, has embedded in it all of the cost for equipment and personnel and insurance and gasoline, it, it's all embedded. So, the reason that I brought this up tonight is because I don't think we talk enough about these mutual aid agreements and contracts. But I, this is just my interpretation, you know? Even if we do finally get the, the townships to agree to this, just know that, you know, when we go out to bid for some of these trucks and stuff, there's gonna be pushback again.
And I would add, we've been very transparent the last few years. I think if you go back five years or more, sometimes the townships didn't get an accurate report of how much things caught, or you know, how fire came out at the end of the year, how ambulance, if they, you know, broke even or not. But the last few years, we have given detailed, detailed budget reports saying, you know, this is, this is how much money we lost. This is how much the runs cost. This is how much supplies cost. And we've tried to do that to back up everything we've been saying that this is. And the other thing that, that I keep coming back to is fire and ambulance service, it, it isn't a luxury. You know, you, you have to have that. If, if you are having a heart attack and you live in a rural township, you really better hope there's an ambulance that can get there. And I mean, I-
What is the choice that they have if they don't care for the rates that we have? Can they?
So ambulance and fire are both different. They're governed by different state statutes. Ambulance would have to get approval from the MSRB, which is the ambulance board. Well, it's not that anymore, but
No, it's the?
It's the commissioner.
Yeah.
They have a board, a new board, because we like to-
Used to be the MSRB and now it's the ambulance. I can't even tell you.
I can't remember what the name of it is, but they have to approve the move because they look at a lot of different factors and whether or not that's even a good move for them. For instance, Mulkey would like to give us the rest of their twelve sections because they believe in our service more than what they're receiving elsewhere. And so to get that process started is very involved. I mean, it's not just like a signing of the pen or even our decision. It's up to the state. Fire is a little bit different, so if they choose to go with a different fire department, they can. But then they're not stuck with them. They're obligated to be there for up to five years. Meaning if you're, if you decide to go to Lafayette, and let's just say Lafayette in three years folds because they don't have enough volunteers or they don't want to buy new equipment or they can't deal with any OSHA guidelines, whatever happens, right? If that would happen, they couldn't come back to us. They would have to go to somebody else.
Minnesota Office of Emergency Medical Services.
Ah, there it is. Do they have an acronym?
O, OEMS.
OEMS. I'm never going to remember that.
Medical Services. That came from the crowd.
But it is, there's just points of contention in the contract and then, you know, you really, I guess I'll, I'll say it this way. New Alm doesn't service anyone outside of New Alm. No one, their fire department unless it's called for a big mutual aid structure fire, like, you know, if the ethanol plant needed extra attention, New Alm doesn't go to their townships. Mankato, they don't go to their townships. And this, historically, this is the reason why. Because they were paying for a lot of equipment that they didn't need. And-
And that can't be charged out fairly to those townships?
Oh, I think it definitely could be. And I think that if we're going to sign a contract with them, we should remove some of the purchases, including tankers. We, I don't know why the city's paying half of that. I, I just don't.
Aren't the tankers used in some, some cases in town here?
No.
No, because of the hydrants.
I mean, we, we bring them out to bring people to block traffic.
The other thing that a lot of the townships forget is that when a firefighter gets hurt out on their field fire or their barn fire, that's the city of Winthrop that takes that liability. All the work comp, all of that, that falls on the city. Township has nothing to do with that. So if God forbid, they get killed and we get sued, it may have happened out in the township, but we're liable for it.
So I think if, you know, if any conversations happen to come up organically, if you're talking to people who live in the rural areas, you know, I think the message that, that I would like to give, and I'd be happy to have that conversation with anybody is, you know, we, Winthrop is proud of our ambulance and fire service and, and we want to continue providing really good service. And, and we want to have good transparent discussions, but it, it doesn't feel fair to burden our taxpayers even more to benefit the, the townships if they're not willing to come to the table and-
At least share some of the costs.
Yeah.
I mean, it's getting pretty expensive out there.
I don't think should be a question, even. I mean, this is how much it costs us per section?
And that's what a taxing district would do. It would spread the cost out to everyone, including Heartland Corn Products, Nutrien. It would, they're already getting taxed for it. We should make that really clear. Anyone that's in town is already paying this tax. You know, we, we, the last two years have put in the budget to lose money on ambulance and fire because historically, the last three years, that's what they've done. So we are already paying that tax, like Heartland Corn Products is already paying that tax. But this would be an actual tax line on their statement that would give exactly how much they're giving to fire and ambulance. It's just, it's, it's what a lot of towns are going to. Because it's just getting so cost prohibitive to continue to run them. And you need them, right?
Yeah.
Your insurance rates would skyrocket on your house if we didn't have an active fire department. Heartland Corn Products wouldn't be able to run. Neither would Nutrien or UFC. They would have to get a private fire service, buy their own trucks. I mean, it's just very cost prohibitive.
I just had a insurance review meeting for my homeowner and insurance. One of the questions he asked was how far away is the closest hydrant?
Yeah.
And I said, well, it's on the corner of my property. And he said, that's good.
Yeah.
That saves you about eight hundred dollars.
What, what is a rural area in New Alm and what do they do for fire?
They go through Cortland, Cirels.
Other small towns.
Other small towns service them. It's not New Alm.
Like Mankato, I mean, the Niclet covers all the way up to the edge of North Mankato. I mean, you'd think that that's-
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
It sounds goofy in your mind, but they just limit liabilities. They have enough on their plate and they, and then we, we have enough on our plate. We have answered almost a hundred more ambulance calls than when I first got here. Every year.
That's a lot.
It's a lot. There's a lot of stress in it.
So when's the next township meeting?
Uh, we have to schedule one still. But I wanted to bring it up as an informational item tonight. Maybe we can do a workshop next month. But I, you know, just by the reaction of our city attorney and, and some of that stuff, I want to get some, gain some more feedback on that. But I mean, I, I do think that now that we have time to think about it, maybe we should do something different. I mean, the tides are not in our favor on expense.
That is true. And if you get a chance to, you know, contact your legislators about the OSHA coming guidelines on fire departments, it won't hurt. In fact, I think that was one I just sent. There was a, I should have had the link. You could fill it out once and it would automatically email your state and federal representatives about it, so.
Yeah, and we put together when Michelle Fishbach was here last week, we put together like a leave behind brochure on the things that we're working on in Winthrop. And a two-page spread was just all fire, like it's going to cost us five million dollars. You've got to stop the insanity. And it's, it sounds like little things, but it's not, like clean-in, clean-out stations. So fire department comes back, they have to have a clean-in.
What does that mean?
Means they have to get undressed and cleaned before they can actually enter the building.
Because of the carcinogens.
Yes.
That are in the-
We are not set up for that. Even the way our lockers are positioned next to the fire trucks is not allowed anymore.
Nope.
They have to be behind the fire trucks. Well, we don't have enough room for that. But there, I mean, the OSHA regulations, even air packs, Martha, which is a, a great example. We just bought new air packs. They're draggers. They're great. They've worked really well for the fire department. You know, under the new guidelines for OSHA, three years is the only life we get out of them. And they are very expensive.
Five grand a-
They're five grand a pack. They cost us a hundred and ten thousand dollars the first time. Can you imagine every three years having to replace them?
Their, their, their bunker gear, the outerwear, what is that now, three years?
Turnouts, yeah.
Turnouts? That's two or three years now.
It's three. I-
I think, I think they were the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy. And that's a thousand dollars a set.
Hoses, hoses are the same thing. So we get rid of hoses when they don't work. I mean, it's a hose.
They test them all the time.
They test, they do hose testing.
All the time.
But they're, I think it's a five-year maximum on that equipment now. Axes, same way, five years, then they're done. You have to timestamp everything in and when it's done, it's got to go out.
And I will say, I mean, I was, I'm married to a retired firefighter. I, I'm all for protecting the firefighters in any way we can, but you know, this is-
At least one of them.
I didn't know axes wore out that quickly.
I know. I mean-
I think it's more for the bigger departments that are using them every day, every hour.
Right.
I understand that part.
I, I do too.
But then there needs to be an exception.
Exactly. Air packs and turnouts when you're using them several times a week is different than when ours go out a couple of times a month.
Right.
Yeah, it's way different.
Yeah. So I mean, the idea is really great, but the implementation is going to bankrupt us.
Yeah.
I think there, there's going to be so much outcry. There's going to have to be something.
Yeah, I think they've heard outcry the last six, seven months and they just keep doling up regulations.
Nobody, there wouldn't be enough fire trucks to buy to re, I mean, if suddenly you can't use them as of January first.
They're two years behind as is.
Exactly. I know. So we'd all sit here twiddling our thumbs with no fire trucks for a couple of years, even if we had the money to buy them brand new. So. Okay, anything else? Any questions about township stuff? I thought this was going to be quick.
Sorry.
No, that, I mean, it's good. That, that's a really good discussion to have and it's good to be aware of what's going on. Moving on to four point seven, we are asked to accept the six thousand dollar Prairie Lakes, Prairie Lakes Regional Art Council grant for Farm City Fun Fest. Very nice.
Prairie Lakes is granting us six thousand dollars for the music that will happen at Farm City Fun Fest.
Anybody like to move to?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
Second by Jenny. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. On the same side? Motion carried. All right, committee reports. Michael, what you got for us?
A lot. Okay, so I'm going to make this as brief as possible. Last year, in total, we, we received, in the city of Winthrop, not the city itself, but proper, we wrote grants for a lot of organizations. It came up to over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of grants that we received from different entities from, for the city. So that's great. One of those happened to be Rev. And if you haven't seen my million emails, there's a sprout event and, and Henderson, please come. It'll be really fun. The Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation is putting that on. Their Rev group is still hiring. We actually have three very qualified candidates for our, we're calling it an entrepreneurship mentor. People that can meet and speak with entrepreneurs. We actually meet tomorrow night in Given before their city council meeting. So it's got to be a fast meeting. We're putting timelines on it. And so we hope to have them in place by April so that they can start meeting with businesses and giving resources. It's, uh, League of Minnesota Cities on the Capitol on Thursday. I will not be able to attend, but some of our streams partners will be there to help guide legislators to understand wastewater. We did meet with MPCA last week for a two and a half hour conference call about our project for streams. We are now on a second stage. We're putting ourselves together project priority list. And so everyone should have gotten an email invite for later this month. That is for the streams project and we're really going to go over kind of the nitty gritty on the project and really how it will impact rates and where we're at compliance wise. I think that those are some questions that everyone has. That is a joint meeting between the four city entities and we're going to answer all the questions all at one time, so.
And that's going to be here?
Give me some grace. Yes. Yeah, it'll be right here at City Hall. We, we just have the biggest meeting spot, so it'll be easier for us to do it.
Is that the one on the twelve?
That is the one on the twelve.
Could you raise that for them?
I did. And Covenant isn't there that night. Other than that, we've been really just working on policies in the office. We've also been kind of decluttering, you know, this is the time of the year when we go through our audit, but we also try to get rid of documents that are from the nineteen fifties that we don't need to keep. And so we, we are continuing to, to work on, on that stuff.
All right. Anything else? Any questions for Michael? All right, fire.
Just that, um, Corner Pizza the other night on a dime, Adam called me in the middle of the night and said, hey, most of our guys are fighting this fire for the last four hours. We are hungry and we have a lot of cleanup to do. And so I went to Corner Pizza and you could just tell that she, I was like, I need a lot of pizzas for firefighters. And, you know, she really worked hard. Within thirty minutes, they had all the pizza down at the fire department. So thanks to Corner Pizza for that. It was much, much needed that night, especially in the sense, most of them work all day long. They were pretty hungry.
Okay. Let's see, library.
Yeah, so we, for the February meeting, we had a special work session for new board members. It was on February tenth, kind of an in-boarding and policy guidelines, that type of thing. And the next scheduled board meeting will be March seventeenth at five o'clock. Um, any questions for Michael? Public Works.
Just that they're getting ready for the snowstorm, maybe rainstorm. They don't know. Troy was actually supposed to be at the, the water conference up in St. Cloud. And he is going to stay behind obviously because we are afraid we are going to get snow. The other things that Public Works are working on, and I'll combine utilities on this, is really just getting ready for spring. They're really working on, the rest of the light poles on Main Street is, is definitely one of their larger projects. They already have them. They're ready to put them up. They're just waiting for weather to break. And then they're, they're also just getting ready for the parks projects. So that's what they're working on.
A citizen thanked me for, or wanted me to thank the city for cleaning up the pond too.
Yeah, that looks significantly better. They did. Both retention ponds, the one that's east of town and then the one across from the nursery.
That was-
Good. Okay, planning commission.
So they did meet. The planning commission is working on chapter nine of our city code. They're working with our city attorney, one of our attorneys, not our city attorney, on, on really making that a little bit more encompassing. It's focusing really on building use and permits and also those storage containers. So those are the two things that Planning and Zonin are working on.
Okay. RS fiber, I don't think we've met since our last council meeting. I would think we would be meeting sometime in March. So we skipped utility or we did utilities, ambulance. Ed?
So nothing real significant going on. This Thursday is the test out of the psychomotor skills for the students that are in the class, which means they go through their skills portion and demonstrate that they understand how to do them and whatnot. And when they pass that, then they move on to the, more of the deep technical stuff in the, in the EMS world, you know, the lectures and the, really want to call it, but you know? This is the, this is how we do this stuff, I guess, you know, the, the actual lecture part of the class. So we had a little discussion tonight. We think we're going to offer that the students come up here because that is, in this particular class, that is a, you can do that at home if you want to. But we're going to offer them this space so they can all be together as a group and hear it all the same. So that's coming up for that.
Because it's a hybrid class.
It is a hybrid.
They've been doing it in person, but now the second part of the class will be done by Zoom.
Yep. Uh, and then Michael alluded to the uh, uh, we're gonna set, we're gonna start shopping for an ambulance. The one that will be replaced is a two thousand and fourteen. You know, it's, we have a ten-year um rotation on ambulances, so. Um, I purposely pushed this one off a couple of years so that there'll be five years between each ambulance so that we're not hitting the townships every three years or, you know, three years we'll buy an ambulance and then we wait seven and then we buy two in three years again, so. Push, purposely push this off, plus I don't have any place to put the new ambulance because that building behind us will not fit the new ambulance. So that's coming up. I will start contacting vendors here uh pretty soon. They're about eighteen, eighteen months out for delivery, so um I would expect sometime twenty twenty-six to uh take delivery of that and hopefully we have a spot to put it. Um, and I'll just touch on that, too. We did have a uh, um, conversation with the, the new architect that we're using. They've got some preliminary plans put together for us. They're starting to throw some numbers at it uh so we can see where the budget is, which is what we didn't have the last time. And if it fits within our budget, then we'll go into more details and start them on the uh construction documents and that kind of stuff. So it is moving forward, it's just moving forward very slowly. And and right now, we're looking at adding on to the existing fire building. So we'll keep that building the way it is with some remodeling to it and some uh moisture mitigation so that stuff quits rusting and then we'll have the, the new section of it. Which will have all the ambulance parking and it'll have the, some office space and meeting space, kitchen and things like that, so. When we get further along, I'll share some plans and let you guys all look at it, but that's coming up, too.
Okay. Any questions about ambulance? Uh, police. Logan. Good to see you.
Good seeing you. Uh, just a quick little update. Um, so, made a notice, I was on the last couple of meetings, I was at training, so. Um, fill you in on that. I went to the Cleone Command Academy up in Camp Ripley and I took a lot of information away from there uh to bring it back here and start implementing it. You must have seen my email about the accreditation program, so we're gonna be starting that here soon. Um, Officer Iaction is going to be starting K-nine school here at the, on the tenth uh with K-nine Nash. So we're very excited.
Who is just a doll. He's.
He is, he is very adorable. Yeah, you'll have to stop by. I think he'll, he's gonna be working later on this week. Um, the squad car is, was built on the twenty-fourth of last month and it's going through its whole process right now of getting shipped off to another place to get the police features on it. We should be getting that probably at the end of this month and then it will be outfitted um up by St. Cloud, middle of April, so. Uh, probably end of April, beginning of May, we'll finally have new squad car, um, Aaron's squad car. If you didn't see that email, um, it has had significant issues. So yes, we're, we're just praying that it will hang on for a couple of months, so.
Goodness for a good repair guy in town.
Yeah, yes, honestly. Um, other than that, I don't know what, any questions?
All right.
Cool.
Thanks for doing the leadership training, too.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, cable question.
Yeah, so I think the highlight of that meeting, we met on um February nineteenth and the uh representative from the Sibley East School Board was there asking for an owl like we have. And we did.
That's.
We're gonna meet again on the nineteenth.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, park, we talked about parks quite a bit, I think.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting.
Okay. Um, I think that's all that's on the agenda.
So I hope to adjourn.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, you can oppose that, so we're adjourned.